Six o'clock, I call the meeting director. First order of business, public comment. If anybody has something they'd like to say, come to the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board, not to the public, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Bob Bora, 41 Virchill Road. First, thank you all for your time and effort and for putting up with old fogies like me and their dressing. Virchill Road and High Road have a lot in common. They're beautiful scenic roads with a lot of curves and hills and blind spots for drivers. They have about the same housing density. They have a lot of foot traffic, equestrian traffic, kids learning how to ride bikes, traffic, and people walking dogs. The disconnect between the two roads is when it comes to signage. Virchill Road has two signs, one on either end, 25 mile an hour. The only mileage sign on High Road is 100 feet of the bridge for 20 miles an hour. Other than that, a lot of people seem to think there is no limit, and they drive that way. I walk it twice every day. The other thing is the signage density at the first 300 yards off of 152 onto High Road. Within 300 yards, there are 42 metal posts next to the road. None of them seem to be very effective. Some of them are broken, some of them are 20 feet off the road, God knows what they're doing there. They're unsightly, they, I think they detract from the scenic aspect of the road. 12 of them over the 300 yard stretch are no parking signs, apparently specifically put up for Bedrock Gardens benefit or sarcasm. But for maybe two or three days, they had advertised events in which their hockey muck overflowed and they had a data problem. And for that, we now have 12 signs, as I say, to me, they detract from the scenery, they're unnecessary. I don't understand why one could not simply have one sign or two signs, one a speed sign at the beginning of High Road and one a no parking sign violators will be towed and towed them. And it seems to me that's really all you need. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Can we, Chief, can you respond to any of that?
Yeah, can. Actually, Mr. Barth and I had a conversation at the last meeting about this. So the next morning, I talked to Steve and Karen, and actually what happened was there were actually seven signs at the time. And when I brought it up to Steve and Karen, Karen Ross, he told me there are actually supposed to be more signs, they were supposed to go all the way down to the bridge. So she then prompted Steve to go out and put the other signs. Rather than go all the way down to the bridge, Steve and I had a conversation that just after Mr. Silver's property, there would just be a sign that said, "No parking here at the bridge," to try to eliminate the amount of signs that were out there. I had a conversation with Steve about the speed limit sign, and he talked to Warren and Pete, who you know have been around forever. According to them, there's never been a sign out there, and we do have other roads in town that there is no speed limit sign, so it's by law 35 miles per hour. I did put the speed trailer out there to try to address his speed concern, and we're going to do a traffic survey so we can determine what time of day there are issues and try to target our enforcement through that. But as far as the signage, that would have to go through Steve, but that's where we are at this point, according to the ordinance that was written. And he's right, it is because of Bedrock Gardens parking complaints.
And the signs are how far spaced?
Um, yeah, I think they're about maybe 15 feet apart, something like that. They start, as soon as you turn on to High Road, you get in maybe 50 yards, it starts, and then they go around the corner, there's one on the telephone pole. And then on the opposite side of the road, there are two, if you're heading back this way, between their driveway and their new parking lot. And then as you come out of the corner, heading back towards Harvey Mill Road, there's another one. I mean, I'll agree, there are a lot of signs.
A correction, I've counted the no parking signs, there are 12, not seven.
No, 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 when I went out there, there were seven. The day after you and I talked, there were seven, and then they added, they added five more after that because they hadn't finished them the year before.
I've been counting them for three months. There have been, there have been 11, and then there were 12 all of a sudden.
Were you counting all the signage out there? I'm just counting the ones as you're heading into High Road.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm counting both sides of the road.
Yeah, no, I was just heading, the ones when you're coming in on the right-hand side.
Okay, yeah, I got you. Sorry.
Yep, no problem.
It's a lot of signs.
So I can talk to Karen and Scott again tomorrow, see if there's something we can do about it and...
So there's two concerns, you think there's way too many, sorry, you think there's way too many no parking signs, and you're concerned about people driving too fast?
Uh, there's no question people drive too fast.
So we'll do the traffic survey, and that tells us, it does a 24-hour count, how many vehicles, what time of day, and the speeds, high speed, low speed, average speed. We do it with Steve a lot, so he knows when the target is plowing, so we know when, what time of day there's the most traffic, and he can set up his plow routes through that. So we'll get it set up. We don't tell anybody when it's out there, we put it out and get the numbers and, yeah. Well, the problem is, yeah, you put it out there, somebody knows it's there, they try to get the numbers up or whatever, but, so we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep. Anybody else?
Nope. Well, I got, I may, I may have something, because I need to call you.
You may have something.
I'm up in the front row, fourth in the row. I've been meaning to call you, we're doing a parade for the VFW and the commander, the VFW plus one. We would like either you or a delegate to speak at the ceremony.
When do you need to know by?
Oh, it's on the 30th, so...
Before the 30th.
Before the 30th. We just had our meeting, and we haven't had a parade or anything in two years, so all this stuff is like, oh, we gotta do this, oh, we gotta do that, oh, we gotta get Bugler, so it's...
Do you have a speaker?
You?
No, it's not me. No, we do, somebody is gonna speak. We don't really have, we've been trying to locate a speaker, but nobody's been available. So I think, I think Andy's doing it, or we have somebody that Andy's gonna get for a speaker.
I work with Major General Mark Sears.
Okay.
He was the commander at P's, so I can ask him, I don't know about this year, but maybe subsequent years.
Right. Yeah, yeah, maybe next year, this year's, I mean, it's kind of short notice now, so...
Really, right.
But yeah, that'd be awesome, that'd be awesome. I don't know if he's ever spoken there.
I don't, I don't know, I don't believe so, but I have a little pool, because I work with him.
Okay, well, that'd be, that'd be awesome, so thank you, so...
I'll ask him, maybe for next year.
Okay.
Thanks, I get the call.
Yes, say hello to Maria. Anybody else? No. Okay, number three, appointments. Can we do Mr. LaCourse?
Yes, I am here.
Oh, hey, I'm gonna have my picture taken.
No, she didn't mention that?
Hey, hold it, I gotta fix myself.
So we'd like to present this certificate of achievement for our 10 years of dedicated service.
Thank you.
We were immersed, and we should have done it last year, but we're getting to it now.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think that was it.
That was it? Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, since I have the microphone now.
Yes.
No, I'd just like to say that it's always been a privilege to serve as on-the-board of selectmen, you know, I have a definite love for this town, there's no other place I'd like to live, so I'm gonna continue. As you know, I'm on the planning board, and hopefully I will stay involved for many years after I retire. But I'm not retiring yet, so, okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
So it'll stay nice.
We'll see you later.
All right, thanks, John.
Uh, it's camaraderie, there we go, up and downs. All right, now I'm coming, still in the federal line, I'm stuck, so, I'm the commander of the LEED, VFW plus one, six, seven, six. We'd like to do a flag retirement ceremony on or around June 14th, which is Flag Day, and it's gonna be probably in conjunction with Pete in the burning of the brush pile at the transfer station. We figured we'd do it there because the transfer station has a lot of flags to retire, as well as the VFW, we have them up in storage, I got a container here, so, if anybody else has any flags, bring them to the transfer station, and so that's what we'd like to do. And I talked, I talked to Steve, Pete, Warren, Ben, and everybody, they're all, they're all about it, and Pete's like, yeah, whatever, just let me know as long as you get the okay, so...
Can we put something in the equator too, then, if you bring your flag to the transfer station for the 14th? Any specific time or just...
Well, that's, it's, it's gonna be, like I said, on or around June 14th, and it's, I'm gonna work with Pete and figure out when's gonna be a good time to do it, it might actually end up being that sad day after the 14th.
Okay.
And we'll just do it then in collaboration with the burning of the brush pile, so...
Okay. Any questions?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I move to approve a flag burning retirement ceremony at the LEED transfer station on or about June 14th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Better be you, because if nobody does, any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, oh, and Mr. Rose's request, are you inclined to be a speaker?
I don't know, what is it, is it that the...
It's at the memorial, they're praying.
If you need me to.
I don't know, I'm saying in terms of, we could always call Katrina, she's not here, that's pretty...
Because she must be speaking.
Yes, she does. I, I move to appoint Katrina to...
No, no.
Come on.
That's a terrible idea.
All right, I'll do it then, if you don't want to do it.
I, I, how about you do it this year, I'll do it next year?
Oh, okay. Can you put that in the minutes?
I'll come this year, see what you have to say.
Okay, all right, all right, so you've got me.
Okay, thank you.
Fortunately or unfortunately, that's who you got, so...
So we're stepping off the 1300, so...
Okay.
1300, where are you starting at?
So we start at the Old Town Mall.
Okay.
And we march to Memorial Field. It's a long walk.
So you're in the parade, I'm not. I'll be down there waiting for when you...
That's fine, that's fine.
All right, sounds good. All right, next up, Tom Drunsfield.
I'm here to request an increase in our detail rate and what we charge for the cruiser. I think Andy has some numbers, he was tasked with getting some numbers, but we're towards the lower end. When I had that department meeting that we had discussed a few weeks ago, that was one of the things that was brought up, was our detail rate, and the cruiser rate has been $10 an hour since I can remember. Obviously, the price of gas has gone up, maintenance. So keeping in mind that the contractors we work for are paying more money, we have three different detail rates, 40 for patrol, 45 for sergeant, and, uh, 45 for sergeant, and 59 for me. So my request is to make them all 50 across the board, to include me, so it'll kind of help average them out, and it'll get the guys more money, not as much of a hit on the contractor's end, and that's what we're gonna do.
The only town of the five surrounding towns that was lower than Lee was Barrington, and they're at 49 for the officer. And the record breaker is Durham at 130.
Holy shit.
For the officer, that doesn't include the car.
And we've been at 40 and 45.
That's just for the officer, not including the administrative fee?
That's just the officer. Some towns have a fee for the officer and the cruiser and an administrative fee, some towns just use a cruiser and officer fee. Durham uses just cruiser and officer, and their high rate is 130 for the officer and 10 for the cruiser.
And so do we, do we have a...
Administrative fee.
Do we have an administrative fee, thank you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which will increase, because of this increase, but it's a minimal increase, but twofold, then it also helps us increase the outside detail line item to buy more equipment on the road.
Because it's what, 25%?
I believe it is.
Oh, it's a percentage?
Yeah, it's a percentage.
So it's 25% of the 50 and 25% of the, of the 15, if we...
Yes.
Any other questions for the chief?
And is this high enough? It sounds like we're still, like, gonna be at the very low end.
I mean, our people would not argue with more. I like to take small bites at the apple, but I'm open to negotiations for sure. Yeah, we're still at the lower end. I know, I think, I believe Barrington's union is going to be negotiating to increase theirs as well.
Do you have the rates from the other towns that you checked?
Sure, and the high rate in Durham was for the chief at 130. New Market uses $75 as a flat fee for all their officers, Nottingham uses $60 as a flat fee for all their officers, as I mentioned, Barrington is at 49, and I also had the New Hampshire State Police, which use a flat $84 rate.
Wow, so we're really lucky, and this as well, in my opinion. You know, we can meet Nottingham.
Would you be adverse to increasing it to 60?
Absolutely.
You'd be adverse to it?
Oh, no, I would not be adverse to it. I would agree with that, 60 and 15.
Do we have rates for the car for neighboring towns?
Sure, as Tom mentioned, Lee has been $10 forever, Barrington is $17 for the car, Nottingham is $15 for the car, New Market and Durham are $10 for the car.
I mean, I feel like 15 and 60 is even still really low.
You know, we can address it again next year, I think less of a shock to the vendors that we work for, so 60 and 15, and, and then we can see, you know, maybe gas comes back down, so it's not as much of an issue next year, hopefully.
I don't know if that's what it is.
I don't think that's gonna happen, but it's okay.
I don't know how you feel about 15 and 60.
I'm okay with 60 and 15, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
No, thank you.
So I move to approve increasing this lease special duty rate to 60 dollars per hour for all lease personnel.
Is that good?
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I also move to increase the cruiser hourly rate from $10 an hour to $15 an hour. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Would the, I'm sorry, would the fire chief be coming to change his rates as well, or what do you think?
That I don't know, I only, I can't talk to Tom about this.
Does the, does the, so we don't know if the fire is similar?
I don't know, I had not researched that. I certainly can.
Okay, we'll just, I don't know, the chief...
I'll, I'll talk to Scott tomorrow.
Oh, so you guys have it, okay.
No, no, because they don't work a lot of detail, so I don't think about them as, as working details.
Well, they get charged to do the racetrack, though.
Racetrack, yeah.
So that's their big thing.
Yep, so I'll, I'll talk to Scott tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
He knows I was coming in to increase our detail rate, but...
All right, item number four, regular business, time of the year.
Yes, the first item I have is the LEED greeters' charge. I tried to put together a relatively simple, straightforward charge for them to use moving forward, something Ward wanted me to do. What I found in trying to research what other communities use is that most communities do this as part of their economic development committee and don't have any particular charge that's specified as welcoming residents. It's mostly about welcoming businesses and working with businesses and residents together.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Where is this particular group gonna get their information on to, in terms of who is coming into town? Are they gonna get it from the real estate agents? How are they gonna get the information?
That I don't know exactly. I know some communities do this by request, and typically the town clerk's office is instrumental, when do people come in to register vehicles, register dogs, and having the information present in the office and also asking if they would like a visit from the welcoming committee.
Okay.
I think there's a couple of ways we can reach out. They have not had a first meeting yet to sort of discuss how they want to move forward, but that would be one of my recommendations to them. We also have a new resident form on our website that the town clerk tries to get new residents to come in and fill out.
Okay.
It would be a good opportunity.
And Katrina's gonna do this?
I believe Katrina is part of this, yes.
All right. Any comments, concerns?
He don't have any comments.
Okay.
Have we considered the new form on the website as being like a Google form, so they don't actually come in and fill it out?
Well, we would have to do a Microsoft-type form, we don't have a Google component on the website or for town software particularly, I don't, I'm gonna bring that up again a little later too, this evening, but we do have the form available now to, I believe they can download it, I also believe they may be able to fill it out online, although it has, we ask for some fairly personal information on our new resident form. In fact, when I looked at it, I actually wondered, maybe you wanna back off on some of the detail we asked for, but...
If anything, if you can get a file of PDF that they can fill out.
Yep.
And then save it, and then just email it to whoever.
They do it now with the other applications.
Yeah, anything we can get into the 21st century in terms of data collection, so...
I agree.
All right, so I guess the board is good with this, so let's have them go forth and greet.
The next item I had was Stratford Regional Planning Commission dues. We received our renewal notice, we were billed on a partial basis last year when we agreed to come back onto the planning commission. We've received an annual bill of $5,600, and in talking about this with Joanne, one of the suggested ways to pay for it, because we had not budgeted for it in the 2022 budget, was possibly the contingency fund.
Can I ask a question? I know I'm a little bit behind the times, but it says the 2106 Town of Lee Dues, what is that? Is that the year? Or what is...
It's under the bill.
It's under the bill, it's under the project.
The number on the bill?
Not changing my decision in terms of where to charge it, but, you know, something's a little bit...
I'm not...
Maybe 2106 is our town number or something?
Maybe, I don't know, that's what I was asking.
Because it does say fiscal year '23 in that description.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, 21, oh, yeah, that must be a typo or something.
I'm not sure if it's a typo or if it's a decode for us.
Okay.
I would suspect maybe it's a bill.
Started and ask. All right, so it's an unanticipated expense, so, yeah, let's take it out of the contingency fund. How much is left in there? It's 20,000, but...
There's a little over 6,000 left.
So this will, like, totally wipe it out?
This will leave a few little bucks, yes.
All right, all right, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to authorize the assistant town administrator to pay the Stratford Regional Planning Commission invoice in an amount not to exceed $5,600 out of the 2022 contingency fund.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, the next item I have is Google Storage, and this has been talked about with regard to the Sustainability Committee. Right now, there are some private, at least one private Google Storage account, it's housing documents for the Sustainability Committee. Right after the first meeting of the Housing Committee, we had an individual put together a share file based on a Google program that they thought would be wonderful for collecting and keeping information that the committee could share. The problem that I have with this almost immediately is RSA 91A3 requirements. We don't have Google credentials for the town or Google accounts for the town, so these things are housed on, on private sites that I may have access to, may not have, when somebody makes an information request. And I don't know that all committees understand, but anything that you, it's not just actions you take in your minutes, anything that you accept as material or store as material for your committee is subject to 91A. I have talked to Steve Gagnon, I'm gonna meet with him on Wednesday of this week. We have some capability to do this through Office 365, Microsoft, in similar fashion. The only drawback to the Office 365 option is that we would likely have to give committee members town email addresses, which on its face is a fairly sound practice and not necessarily a bad thing, just like the work of selectmen does. What I'm gonna talk to Steve about is whether we're looking at any significant cost to move forward. Right now, we have, I believe, ATOWN primary address that we use and stem off of that, so I'm not sure what our options are, given the number of committee members and commission members and board members we have. He's also going to give me some specifics on the police server, and the Sustainability Committee was interested in using that to house their archives when we replace the police server. That is happening on a Wednesday.
Is there no option to get, like, a master Google account at the town homes, and then each committee has its stuff?
We're going to discuss that as well. He's gonna give me a rundown of all the options and what the costs might be associated with them. That's the, primary concern is that we do not have any specific money set aside to pay a whole lot more right now for this.
Well, I think it's something that we should be doing anyways.
Yep. I have an update for the Conservation Commission's Day of Giving project with Extreme Networks. I had gotten this confused, I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that we were having volunteers that were going to be coming to remove invasive weeds, and that is indeed, I think you've seen the information on this, and this is the Mills Reserve in Little River Park. Extreme Networks will again be partnering with the Town of Lee to volunteer time for their company-wide Day of Giving. Four to six volunteers will work with the Conservation Commission members to hand pull garlic mustard, a non-native invasive plant. Conservation Commission is very pleased to have Extreme Network volunteers helping this important work. It takes multiple years to remove garlic mustard. Their effort is part of the New England Garlic Mustard Challenge, a collaborative effort to restore natural ecosystems and prevent further spread of this invasive plant. There's a link for further information, and I see Anne Tappin is with us this evening. If you have specific questions about this beyond the description, I'm sure she could answer them.
Any questions?
I told her.
Anything you want to say, Anne, or...
This is the second year we've done it with them, and they did a fabulous job, and they were fine with coming back again, which is great.
That's good, all right, sounds good.
Okay, next action item I have is the, it's under miscellaneous, but it is the town tax warrant. We came down to the wire on getting this. We are still without our regular assessor, and...
Oh, yes.
Have been working with other personnel from MRI to get this done, and it was done on time for your signature today. And I didn't bring the whole warrant, because I didn't assume you wanted to review several hundred pages of tax bills, but the total tax bill is $7,892,100, and I have a summary page and a signature page for your signatures that the town clerk tax collector would very much like you to sign this evening. that the town clerk tax collector would very much like you to sign this evening if possible.
If I don't sign it, that means I don't get a bill.
This is exactly how it works.
That's exactly how it works. So when will she send those out? Like, she's going to this month?
Working on it this week.
She's going to be working on it right away. Okay, under miscellaneous, beyond the warrants, I had a few other things. You could ask me to calculate what we might save based on potential legislation regarding Group Two retirement funding. The original bill HB 1417, which would have given us a 7.5% reduction year on year, was tabled in the Senate, but House Bill 1221, which could provide a one-time payment equal to a 7.5% reduction in Group Two retirement costs and also Group One teachers, is now on conference committee. The meeting for the conference committee is Wednesday, the 18th, to decide what they can reach for a compromise on that bill. And just to refresh your memory, presently, we pay 33.88% towards retirement of police officers and 29.78% for Group Two fire retirement. We budgeted $191,265 for police retirement in the '23 budget and $86,442 in the fire retirement line. And 7.5% of those two sums would be a $20,828, as I understand it, one-time payment from the state based on adjustments to the capital gains tax. We'll know whether that's a go or not after Wednesday morning. The meeting is at 11 o'clock, I believe, in concrete, if you're still inclined to swing on.
There, according to Catherine Heck, who at the Municipal Association, I'm up with her, we asked her for some updates. She says that they're in conference because there's a few things got tapped on to it. And I think that's the particular issue. I don't think the issue is with the 7.5%. The other thing is the gentleman that's the Speaker of the House, I forget his name, he's amenable to extending that for multiple years. So he's trying to gain support. Supposedly, there's bipartisan support for that, so we'll see.
It looked like there was initially for the bill at that table, but.
Also, we're supposed to expect almost double the amount of highway block grant that we're supposed to get. So that's good. And there's another something else that's coming out that's more money that we have to spend for roads or road support, like trucks or whatever like that. So there's going to be some other funds coming our way, so that's good, so.
Also, under miscellaneous, I would just quickly mention Denise and I attended the Primex Conference last week. They had some, I thought, very impressive educational sessions. Denise went to the dissection and analysis of how Peterborough got into the situation they got in through cyber liability, which was a lot more complicated than Davis figured out. I went to an HR session on not getting sued in dealing with your employees. And I went to another legal session about how to keep your town from getting sued and how to converse and conduct yourself when dealing with multiple players on a municipal team, which actually I found all to be useful.
That's good.
Other things, the Housing Committee had its first meeting last week. We met midweek, in the middle of the day, actually, was it Monday?
Monday and noon, yep.
Yeah, Monday at noon, middle of the day on Monday, not middle of the week. And lastly, I would mention that Ben LaFawn from DRA is in our offices for the next two days doing, they don't call it an audit, but it is essentially an audit of selected property files from the town just to see how the town employees and our assessing employees are doing with regard to this. He's assured me that there's nothing punitive about it. Any findings they have, they will turn over in a healthy, move-forward fashion. And he seemed generally pleased today with everything that he found.
Okay. In terms of the auditors, when will they come in, August?
That's my opinion, yes. We haven't had any contact with them yet, but.
Has anything happened on the Technology Committee? We have Housing Committee meeting?
I don't believe we've had any members, we may have one.
One person?
Person.
And the Housing Committee, who's Mr. Brown's on it almost when we sign this thing, who else?
There's four.
There is Mr. Brown, Mrs. Gorg, Katrin, myself.
Sally. Sally Seatonholm.
Sally Seatonholm and one other.
Deb Shid, Deb, Deb Sugarman?
Deb Sugarman is also the other one, yes.
Okay, that's good.
And we were joined by Nick from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission to give us some suggestions for where we might want to look. There's also a meeting coming up, and I'm not sure how secure the housing plan that's moving through the legislature right now is what the governor has, but there is the potential of $100 million being made available for public housing concerns from municipalities, so.
Okay.
We'll be following that as well.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
I don't, I have had a salary item, but I think you initially talked about this in non-public, so I'll give you that information in non-public as well. If you don't mind.
Anything else?
Not that I've worked.
All right, section B consent agenda, so I moved to, unless you want to remove anything. I moved to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Really too bad that you can't use rubber stamps. Official box.
Uh-oh, it was my signature, it's getting sloppy and sloppy.
Oh, there was one other question. So you notified the Conservation Commission of this intent to.
Those copies were ordered, yes. I know she did because I talked to the director, she presented them.
Okay. Just checking to make sure so when I go to the next committee, I don't get that. Right, Anne?
Right. That's what we're known for.
That's what you're not really.
I have some of the books.
That's it, yeah. Also, Denise likes it when we mess up the paperwork and move them all around. Yeah, she likes to pull them back together.
My signature gets wobbler and wobbler after about the first dozen. Check out, check out Rebecca's here.
Oh, my signature's a mess. It's really just my initials. I may never remember if I printed any of that down.
So Andy, are you on a one-man crusade to get people to sign up for the elderly exemption?
Not exactly. I think the revaluation spurred people to look at what options they may have available that they had overlooked previously.
It's a option available to them, and we'll take a chance on it.
Denise is the first point of contact generally when folks come in and she's very good at explaining to them. The elderly exemptions, the veterans credits and such.
I haven't heard nothing yet. Did you find one?
Yeah.
And you, Will, I spoke to Jeff Lavalley from Cross Country, who is actually working on the abatement request that came out of the revaluation. And I'm hoping that we're going to see those within the next couple of weeks. They have until July 1st answer, and I had really hoped that we'd see them well before that, but.
I got the conservation coming through Wednesday. We signed the one for the Grange, so you're all set there.
This is all growing places and there's chances. Yep.
Oh my goodness. Their tax return is like 40 pages.
Here's the next one for you, sir.
I don't know if I'll send this to his tax paper.
And there are a few more in that yellow folder, too.
Were you going to look at the manifest or?
I did review the manifest this morning, although not a board member. I went through them to look for any inconsistencies or anything that stood out and found nothing. Thank you.
At least I'll be using them, I do use cycle.
All right, anything on no business? Nope.
Not that I have.
Okay, new business, CIP Committee?
I listed the CIP Committee and I had sent just a cover sheet with some guidelines about what other communities do. And I think there are two things that the board needs to decide, that being how many members you want on your capital improvement program committee and the makeup, how many planning board members you want. You're required to have one planning board member on it by statute. One of the things I noticed was most of the towns around us had a school board member on there. Because they have their own school, they're not, with the exception of Madden Area and Oyster River, but a number of the other small towns in the area have school board members on there, which might not be as important to the, as we're a cooperative district. But five, six, or seven seems to be a common number for the committees.
So.
And if you don't want to wrestle that out this evening, I'm happy to put together a specific sample proposal for you.
So the RSA says we have to have somebody from the Budget Committee and the Planning Board, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, so we can determine who else.
And I don't know, I didn't think of this, but with an advisory Budget Committee, it's likely that you don't have to have a Budget Committee member if you don't want to, or most communities do.
Well, we already have one that's interested, so let's take advantage. Let's take her, so. So Rebecca, what do you think? I'm thinking seven. I don't want six. I want an odd number, I want an odd number.
Yeah, I agree, an odd number, so I would say either five or seven, or sorry, five or seven.
So, but in terms of makeup, we have somebody from the ABC, somebody from the Planning Board. So a staff member, that would be prudent.
Specifically the town administrator or any staff member?
Communities use a mix, some have the town administrator, some have the police and fire chief as a common. I think probably depending on the size of municipal buildings, apparatus, that sort of thing, but.
And if we have two town employees, that gives us, that's only four, so three more. So three residents?
Do we need a select board member?
I don't know, we could if we wanted to.
Most of the committees had a select board of council members on them, that I reviewed.
I want Katrin.
No, wait, 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 I threw her underneath the bus earlier and you said no, so.
I didn't think that that was a good place to work.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Well, like, like you said, we don't have to do it right now, but so a select board member, somebody from the ABC, a planning board member, two from the Town of Lee, so that's one, two, three, four, five. Two more from residents? Well, I want to get residents in there.
And add two residents more?
Oh, I had the two over.
Yeah, so are you okay with two residents as well?
Yeah, so I already got it written down.
All right. So makeup of the group will be seven members, one select board, who we'll determine at some point, somebody from the ABC, one planning board member, two town of Lee employees, and two residents. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So would you communicate to the planning board chair, Mr. Smith, that we are looking for a representative from the planning board? Mr. Tappan, do you have a question?
Yes. A couple of things. John Tappan, stepping stone, 187 Stepping Stones Road.
Yeah.
First, the copy of the RSA that I have, I just downloaded a couple of years ago, so it may not be the most recent, but it does not state that you need to have a member from the advisory budget committee or budget committee. It only states that you need to have a member from the planning board.
That would be my recollection as well.
Also, department heads need to report to the CIP committee. Putting department heads or department employees on the CIP committee seems like a conflict of interest. The CIP committee, in the statute, the CIP committee is able to tell the department heads what they think, what the committee thinks the priority should be for those projects that the department heads are proposing. So if you put department's personnel on the committee...
So, well, let me go back to what I'm reading here. It says, "Membership of the subcommittee shall be at least one or the planning board and may include but not limited to other members of the planning board, advisory budget committee, select board, town employees, and residents of the town." So that's not what the RSA says?
The RSA just says...
What?
That is what it says, and it does allow that.
Oh, it allows that?
Yes. It does not, the only requirement is the planning board member. The others are allowed, and anybody else that you want to have on it. And I'm not trying to make a point that town employees should not be, but you should look at this committee, its purpose is to provide outside recommendations to the select board and to the advisory budget committee. If you have, and the town employees independently, they make their case to the CIP committee, they make their case to the advisory budget committee, they make their case to the select board. But if you have too many town employees on the CIP committee, you're eliminating that, or partially eliminating that independent assessment that you can get from the committee. That's my opinion.
If we were to take out the two employees, that would give us five, which is an odd number.
That's, that's you said, my...
Okay.
Thank you, John.
I would note that quite a number of committees do have town employees on a committee. Typically, it is a fire chief or police chief. I expect as much because of their knowledge of the infrastructure they have and the expensive equipment that they're likely looking for.
I'm thinking, and I understand your point, John, but I'm thinking in terms of Steve Bullock has way more than... What either of the two chiefs have, so... What are your thoughts?
I don't know, I feel like Steve Bullock is kind of essential to this because he has like just so much knowledge about what needs to be fixed.
What do you think about?
Maybe non-voting members?
What do you think about Steve Bullock, and then we ask three residents? Then Steve's not overpowering the committee. I get what John's saying. Other than that, let's go back to five. And just have select board person, the ABC person, planning board into residents. Or we can postpone it till the next meeting and get Trin's input and get the products.
Yeah, no, I just was trying to figure out how to get the information to that group as efficiently as possible. I feel like just having Steve there, be like, nope, that's the thing that needs to be fixed, is kind of important.
The other thing we can do is we can appoint five people, and we can appoint two people, Steve and maybe one of the chiefs, as not voting members, but just members of the committee, something like that. Then they attend meetings, they hear everything, they can give input, but they're not decided. Go, Mr. Tappan.
John Tappan, again, I think in making the decision, you should also remember that the purpose of the committee is purely advisory. So it is an independent look at the plans that department heads have, but it is not controlling. It is, the CIP committee is making a recommendation, but it's only something that the select board considers as a recommendation. And the select board makes his own decision about what the plan is actually going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think the five members and then asking Steve to be available to them.
All right, so let's go with one select board person, which we haven't determined who it is. ABC person, quest somebody from the planning board, and put in the equire that we are looking for two residents to serve on the CIP.
Is there nobody on the current CIP that is...
No, that's the planning board. And somebody from the planning board can volunteer, but perfectly able, willing, if they're willing.
No, I, I mean, don't we have a CIP committee right now?
No.
The planning board has it.
The planning board has it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I did not realize it was a subset of the planning board. I got it, I'm with you.
So, are we okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So to do is our planning board request and then equire. And in terms of meetings, I don't know what we can tell them. People would want to know, well, what's the commitment?
It'll be what the committee decides moving forward.
People usually want to know what the commitment is, or they say, hey, I'll do it, so...
I can pull some schedules from surrounding towns that have a CIP committee and see what their meeting schedule looks like.
Because they're not starting from scratch, but you know, there's going to be some significant work, so...
Well, usually our ABC financial planning starts in, what, September? So we really want people who have the ability to do this over the summer.
Yeah.
Because we want it done.
Because part of the ABC process is looking at that, so...
I'd like to have it first instead of last, if possible.
Yep, that's good. Okay, do you have what you need?
Yes.
Anything else under new business? There's a miscellaneous, I don't know if you have it.
I have nothing. Did you have anything, Denise? I was supposed to remember.
I'll only thank you for the, I think Monsieur Denise, that did the thing at the ballpark, that was very nice. The plaque and that was very nice. Other business, I moved to enter into non-public session, I'm for RSA 91A, calling three, room number two, sections A and C. That's it, just A and C.
That's it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott Bugbee, yes, motion passes. Oh, yes, so I moved to seal the minutes of the non-public session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those, oh, Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott Bugbee, yes, motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, not debatable, all those in favor say aye. Aye, most in favor.